There you go.
30 o'clock.
Alderman Bens.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to do something a little different. If we all could please just take a moment, bow our heads in silent prayer, please. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Jordan, in the flag, in the pledge, please, there are flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chief man spoke with Chicago.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bens.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we do have the requests and petitions of citizens, if anybody would like to come up and make any comments or statements. At this time, first one would be Randy Toran. If you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Randy Toran. I live at 1402 Spencer Avenue. Would everybody wanting to Second Street issue a resolution, please stand. These are the quotes from the Ghent residents posted on Facebook the day the barriers came down. The compromise of a one-way works. I've lived in Ghent since 1996, and this has been going on for this long. We finally got the stop signs, which have been a work in progress since 96 and prior. Two decades is a long time to get someone to hear us. It's time to resolve the Second Street cut-through. The cut-through public needs to know, there is a left-turn signal onto Trent now, and we, as Ghent residents, want the Second Street traffic stopped. The one-way proved successful. It's keeping in, let's keep it that way. We are super disappointed. I felt we finally got our neighborhood back. It was good for the entire neighborhood. It felt so much better and safer for the kids. I'm so angry about this. Rem Street is zone commercial. Second Street is residential. The National Register of Historic Neighborhoods states Ghent's boundaries as First, Park, Trent, and Seventh. By allowing Second to funnel traffic to and from commercial zones and Highway 70 by way of our neighborhood street, it is essentially dividing Ghent into two, bringing safety issues into the neighborhood. This is wrong, pure and simple. What, are you serious? It was working. Through traffic flow through Ghent reduced considerably. It seems to me if it was an earnest effort to protect the sanctity of Ghent, it would be up longer, like an actual traffic study, showcasing for one week, what a joke. Who's claiming responsibility for this decision? For one week, it was the neighborhood we should be. The intensity mellowed. People were walking, talking, biking, running, kids playing on the sidewalk along Second Street. And more traffic was using First Street as intended, not funnel down a R-10 residential, nationally-registered historic neighborhood street to commercial zones and Highway 70. More importantly, it was safe. The city just threw us a bone. Keeping Second, as it will continue, with the noise and air pollution, higher crime rate, drug activity, littering, loitering. All aldermen concerned know exactly what the issue is, just the complete lack of compassion and concern for their voting constituents and breaking the city laws for their own agendas. You don't need any more traffic studies. You've already got all the data you need, dozens of previous studies, and it is only going to increase with the overdevelopment on First. Enough stonewalling. Why is the need for people to get from point A to point B an extra minute earlier outweigh the quality of life for dozens of households that would benefit from the Second Street resolution? When you vote no, you're saying, I don't care about your well-being, the safety of your children, your quality of life. Stop working against us and work with us. Some of us are still recovering from Florence. Haven't we suffered enough? So if you can't understand your malfeasance towards us, maybe our class-action attorney can explain it better. Sorry, that's not a threat, but you leave us no other choice. Thanking you in advance for your attention in this matter.
The next petition is from Mr. Randy Foster.
Randy Foster, 1322 Spencer Avenue. The city has defined powers in order to promote prosperity and stability. One is zoning. It allows people and businesses to invest and improve their property, knowing that their efforts will not be undermined by conflicting interests. Another is traffic planning. Well-managed streets distribute traffic in a logical hierarchy. Minor streets serve neighborhoods. Secondary streets collect traffic. Arteries handle high-volume traffic. Traffic choices can make a break in an area despite its zoning, so a city must ensure that its streets are consistent with zoning. The city's approach to Second Street, which is entirely contained within an R-10 residential district, is inconsistent with zoning and violates municipal code. According to New Bern Municipal Code, the purpose of residential districts is to secure for the persons who reside there a comfortable, healthy, safe, and pleasant environment in which to live, sheltered from incompatible and disruptive activities that properly belong in non-residential districts. According to New Bern Municipal Code, a specific intent of R-10 district is item D, to discourage any use which would generate traffic on minor streets other than normal traffic to serve residents on those streets. Second Street is a minor street. But gradually, the city made physical changes to improve access for city vehicles to the city fuel and maintenance facility on Rem Street. The roadbed is four feet wider on Second Street than it is on other even-numbered streets in Ghent, and it has smoother, heavy-duty pavement. It even has a double-yellow line down the middle designated as a no-passing zone. Seeing that Rem Street slash Second Street is a straight shot between Country Club and Trent Boulevard, drivers started using it as a cut-through to avoid First Street. Thus, in conflict with municipal code, the city changed Second Street from a minor street to a collector's street. Although the city has moved its operations away from this area, the street remains the same. Despite signs prohibiting through-traffic, there are 2,000 to 3,000 cars or more on weekdays. This high-traffic conflicts with the city's own municipal code. It adversely affects property values. Quality of life in the neighborhood is needlessly harmed due to noise, congestion, and pollution. Motors and pedestrians are put at greater risk. Children are put at risk at the three-school bus stops at Second Street and Spencer Avenue. Mayor Outlaw and Alderman Odom, Kinsey, Astor, and Harris all live on streets that are designated for minor traffic. They can take comfort in knowing that the city won't change the nature of their neighborhoods by increasing traffic to several thousand cars a day. On a Nextdoor app poll, 38 people from the Ghent neighborhood voted representing more than one in 10 Ghent residents signed up with the app. This is a larger number of Ghent residents than who attended the Ghent Neighborhood Association meeting a few weeks ago. Of those who voted, 91% said the city should do something to reduce traffic in Ghent. 5% voted that there are no traffic problems in Ghent, and 2% voted other. No one voted to say that traffic should continue on Second Street to keep it off their street. I suggest the city close Second Street at Trent Boulevard. All other even-numbered streets in the Ghent neighborhood are configured this way. I suggest the city make Second Street a one-way street headed south between Spencer and Park Avenues. This will keep through-traffic off Second Street without harming businesses on Rem Street. Finally, I suggest the city prohibit non-local truck traffic from all Ghent neighborhood streets. These measures will put the city in compliance with its own municipal code. They will increase safety, protect a historically important neighborhood, and put through-traffic onto First Street, a street properly zoned and built for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sarah Foster.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Foster, and I live on 1322 Spencer Avenue, and I don't speak that well, so there with me. I thank Alderman Bingle and Astor for their recent efforts to help reduce traffic in Ghent, and Alderwoman Harris for promising to approach the issue of Second Street traffic congestion with fresh ears. I know what you're thinking, thousands of cars represent a lot of voters who would be unhappy if they get cut off from their Second Street shortcut. But once the city fixes the traffic problems that it created on Second Street, drivers will use First Street. It won't take long for them to forget they ever used Second Street. On the other hand, if Second Street traffic problems continue, so will our efforts to right this wrong. Some aldermen have said they are unwilling to give special consideration to a few over the benefits forebending. We aren't asking for special consideration. We're asking for the same conditions that all our neighbors in the Ghent neighborhood enjoy. We're asking for the city to comply with its own municipal codes. In fact, we're asking for the same conditions that Mayor Outlaw and Alderman Harris, Astor, Kinsey, and Odom expect of the minor streets that they live on. They are not being afforded special treatment, are they? One alderman previously wondered what would happen to emergency vehicle access if traffic controls were placed on Second Street. We're not asking for Second Street to be closed. We're asking for Second Street to be configured the same way all other even-numbered streets in the Ghent neighborhood are configured. Emergency vehicle asset, emergency vehicle access on those streets has never been raised as an issue. According to the city's street supervisor at last year's Ghent Neighborhood Association meeting, when workers blocked the intersection of Second and Spencer, the city received zero complaints. This was the trial balloon suggested by Alderman Odom to see what would happen if the Second Street shortcut was blocked. In reality, Second Street was not intended to handle this volume of traffic. It was intended to serve a residential area for local traffic. First Street, one block over, is intended for high-volume traffic. Second Street is not a shortcut. It may be a little shorter than First Street, but it has four stop signs, and First Street gets you there quicker. Second Street is a dangerous cut-through. Of the four stop signs, only one is a four-way stop. Since the city put a four-way stop at Second and Park, we've seen an increase in the stop-sign runners and vehicles pulling out in front of oncoming cars at Spencer. A turn from Second Street onto Trent Boulevard, left or right, is dangerous. There's a blind curve just west of the intersection. The turn from First Street onto Trent Boulevard is far safer. In terms of quality of life for residents on and around Second Street, the four-stop signs have had undesirable consequences. Noise and exhaust have increased because of cars accelerating from the stop signs. Once Second Street stops being an option, motorists will quickly realize all these advantages when they start using First Street. The city has acknowledged Second Street should not be used for through-traffic. It had no through-traffic signs at both ends, although they were universally ignored and unenforceable. These signs both prove the city acknowledges there is a problem and is ineffective at preventing it with signs. We're particularly concerned about the impacts the bulk center and city market will have on Second Street's traffic. It sure looks like the city intends for Second Street to be a primary access to this attraction. If this were a private developer, the city would have required it to mitigate traffic impacts on the nearby neighborhood. The temporary solution that was in place a couple of weeks ago was extremely well-engineered and successful. I urge the city to put it back in place. It is the city's responsibility to restore Second Street to the status required by municipal code, a minor street serving local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent Aiken.
Good evening. I apologize, I don't necessarily have a prepared speech, and he said to come this at the last minute. I took labor work early to come here. I live on 1618 Spencer Avenue, so I'm a few blocks away from Second Street. I travel Trent Road to get to my home. Why do I do that? It's out of respect for the neighbors, and that's made thoroughfare, and then I can just cut down to my house. A lot of people use Second Street as a shortcut. It's a two-block shortcut. Think about that. With stop signs, two blocks, it's not that much. Maybe, maybe, they save a little bit of time. A minute, maybe. Probably don't even save anything at all. But that perceives safety, or savings of time. It comes at a cost, and whose pocket does that cost come out of? It comes out of the time of residents on that street. 2,000 cars a day. Let's take a 16-hour day. Two chefs, average. That's two cars a minute. You want two cars a minute by your house? I don't want it by my house. It's a residential area. But you drive down that street, there's solid yellow line for each lane. Looks like a highway. It's being treated as a feeder, not a residential street. It's been designed as a feeder, not a residential street, but it's a residential area. You all know the zoning, right? We all know what that street is supposed to be, but for some reason, we're pretending otherwise. So, my vote, and I say it with these people again, that something needs to be done about the traffic on that street. It needs to be treated as all the other even streets. It was set as the zoning to be a resident street. Please make it so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
James Owoods Jr., 1903 Country Club Road. I've heard the pleas from Ghent citizens, but I've been a resident of New Bern since 1994, and I've worked in that area. The Second Street feeder, as they call it, it can't end because the other inch, other even streets over there start, stops at Park because of the church and the YMCA. Second Street comes all the way through. If you block Second Street, you're blocking the residents of New Bern who pays for that street. If Ghent neighborhood wanted to be a enclosed neighborhood, they should have moved in a gated community. It is open to all citizens who pay taxes in the city of New Bern, period. Now, the city of New Bern maintains that road. That road needs to be open to all of us that lives in the city of New Bern. Ghent is the only neighborhood in my mind that I know of that the city puts up Christmas lights and mows the grass. Now, if I'm wrong, somebody tell me. So if they want to be exclusive, they need to put up a gate and move in a gated community and not block a public street for everybody to have access to.
Thank you, sir.
Blake Wiggs, 1001 Victoria Way, Trent Woods. So, several days ago, my daughter asked me a simple question while driving home towards Trent Woods. Why does the sidewalk stop? Quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't have an answer, which is kind of why I'm here. Initially, I gave her this long-winded answer. I was like, maybe the city didn't have the funding, or maybe there wasn't enough space to make it happen. But that's when I noticed that it stops right before the Pembroke Community sign. For some reason, I couldn't stop thinking about her question. You see, I don't even live in New Bern. I live in Trent Woods. But symbols are powerful. Sidewalks, in many ways, are a symbol with a strong historical context. They represent access. They represent connection. They represent equity. They represent community. And I'm left wondering if New Bern would be willing or able to extend that sidewalk just a little bit further. We're not even talking about a full mile. And I'd like to ask Trent Woods the same thing. There are three distinct communities living right next door to each other with three distinct histories loaded with lots of context, with children that all attend the same elementary school. What if our children could safely gain access to each other's worlds, each other's neighborhoods, each other's communities? And we could become a little bit more of a community? So I'm asking if the city of New Bern could explore just making that sidewalk go a little bit further? And living in Trent Woods, I'll ask the same. Because my daughter has friends, lives in Trent, in Pembroke. And sidewalks are indeed symbols. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
My name is Ethel Sampson, and I reside at 1038 Sampson Street. And I petition unto all those millionaires and thousandaires with the sound of my voice to supply the balance of the money needed to let the stand the white stay where it is. We have our convention center intact and numerous buildings downtown intact. Why take the one building that the blacks can call their own and move it someplace else? I've been dealing in and supporting New Bern over 63 years. I know I deserve better. When I close my eyes on this side, it should be a blessing to know that a noose is finally taken off of the black people's necks, who have served you so well. Even this city was built off our backs. It's time that we reap what we have sown. City manager J.C. Outlaw, Mayor Ella Bingle, and Mariana Morgan, if possible, will turn away in their grace, because they support us 100%. I even remember the time when Alderman Davis used to come to our other meetings in the old concern system days. He tried his best to help our people purchase land in Duffield area so we could be independent and have our own fields. Some of us had given up hope. Remember the strongest value of limited of the week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Living in the God. My name is Barbara Sampson. I reside at 1149 Craven Terrace, and I'm here to make a plea for the McCotta House on Bloomfield Main Street. And I commend you guys for the way you cleaned off all the bushes so now we can see it and see how it really, really look. It used to be a place where the young people would go to do different activities, to keep them off the street. They would go there in the summertime, and then they would go there when they started school, they would go have an after-school program going. And I want them to have somewhere to go to do something positive, because I'd rather for them to have a road to a beginning than a road to recovery. I want them to have, start them off with this little, small seed, to give them something positive to do. Show them that they are somebody, build their self-esteem up, even though you might not, might think that children don't know anything about self-esteem, but that's where self-esteem start, when you're little. And show you them that you do care for them. And we want you to take, even though we know that you're not going to do anything right now with stand the white, we can start off doing something with McCotta House, because it's just sitting there. And we need to do something positive with it for the young kids. And not only can you do some of them, you can give some people jobs, and you can select the people, you let the little kids take them somewhere, show them some different things in life, places that they don't use to get a chance to go. And you were saying, well, how are we going to do this? Well, where we, what funding, where we going to get the funds from? From all these grants that we've been getting? And I know we've been getting a lot of grants, because I've been reading the papers and stuff. And I want you sometimes start thinking about our community. We don't want a whole piece of the whole pie. We don't want a half a pie. We just want a slice. Just think about us. Think about our community, because we don't want that to become a lost generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the petitions of citizens. At this time, I'm going to go to item number four, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, as is second.
Motion and second is in discussion. See none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, same motion carries. First item, Mr. Stevens, is item number five.
I think mayor members of the board tonight, item number five is a presentation of award from the Sons of the American Revolution. Mr. Lee Purcell is here on behalf of the Sons of the American Revolution. They will present the city with an award for utilizing proper flag etiquette.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you in our home. The National Society of the Sons of the American Revolution is an American congressionally-chartered male lineage organization founded in 1889. Our member roles in all 50 states and five countries include 16 U.S. presidents and 27 Medal of Honor recipients. Our focus is on education, on the principles behind the American Revolution. As our members drive through New Bern, we notice that city offices from all departments display the American flag in good condition, in this building also. And when displayed at night, consistently are properly illuminated according to the provisions of the U.S. Flag Code, which makes the city an excellent example to organizations around the county and elsewhere. Therefore, the New Bern chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution presents this certificate of appreciation to the city of New Bern in recognition of exemplary patriotism in the display of the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Did you, did you have a petition of citizens?
Well, Marty Astor is my alderman, and people around me, and for me, I didn't understand that we needed to do that. I thought this was actually supposed to be just like we would have an opportunity to speak. I didn't realize there had to be paperwork filled out. How would we feel about doing that?
Okay. What's it in reference to?
I mean, I saw our interruption, Mr. Asher, on Ray Door.
Okay. Well, he forgot, he wasn't aware that they had to fill out the request. Let's do this, let's go ahead and, if you would, sir, come up and fill out the petition of citizens' request. We'll do item number six, and then we'll let you come up and, and do your request and petitions of citizens. So while you're doing that, sir, we're going to do item number six.
You'll do a motion at the time to open a backup.
Okay. Make a motion to that effect. I make a motion that we proceed with item six and then allow the gentleman to do his request and petitions of citizens.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same motion carries. Item number six, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a presentation of police department reaccreditation. Tonight, we have two Kalia assessors with us, and at this time, I'm going to turn to the chief, and he'll give you a quick overview of what they're going to discuss and also introduce our guests.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, Tucson Summers, chief of police, city of New Bern. As we have heard tonight, public safety is an essential function of government, and to, and it's very important to have a law enforcement agency that subscribes to a professional set of standards and procedures in order to serve its community. These standards serve to protect our community as well as to protect those who enforce the law. Annually, we have members from the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies remotely check our policies and procedures to see that they are up to par with the industry's standard and to also ascertain if we are following those standards. Every four years, the commission sends some assessors to actually visit the city, to actually look at the way that we process our prisoners, the way we maintain our evidence, and a gamut of things, to make sure that we're actually doing what we say. So tonight, I'm happy to introduce the two assessors that the commission has assigned to the New Bern Police Department. And we have Chief Charles Chuck, excuse me, Chief Carl Shinner. He is the chief of police of La Plata, Maryland, and Amanda Walker, accreditation manager
Good evening, Mayor. Ward Alderman, thank you for having us into your lovely city. We've been, spent most of the day either speaking with officers, doing interviews with residents or business owners.
or business owners, and have been able to get out and enjoy the lovely weather that you have in North Carolina this time of year. And as we do that, we see how the agency is complying with the four hundred and eighty-four standards set forth by Kalia. My name's Carl Schinner. I am the Chief of Police in LaPlata, Maryland. I'm also the team leader for Kalia. And I'll let Amanda introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Amanda Walker. I'm the Accreditation Manager for the University Park Police Department. And I've been involved with Kalia for about twelve years or so, and I am the team member next to the chief here.
So the chief asked us just to provide you with a really quick overview. We're here to verify compliance of four hundred and eighty-four standards set forth by Kalia. They're considered law enforcement's best practices as established by a Commission of Chiefs, Sheriffs, and other law enforcement experts, judges, and people from academia. Kalia was founded by the International Association of Chief of Police, the National Sheriff's Association, the Police Executive Research Forum, and the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. This is a voluntary process, not every agency. There's only about a thousand agencies in the United States of about twelve thousand that are accredited or seek accreditation. There's a lot to be said about an organization that will invite strangers in from outside, open their doors, open their books, and let us take a look to see if they're meeting those standards. Our onsite thus far has been very successful and we hope this, we're here the next couple of days it continues to be that way. But the chief and his staff should be applauded for taking on this task. This is their first, fifth reaccreditation, so it's not their first time to the rodeo and it shows. So is there any questions that we may be able to answer for you? Yes, sir.
Yes. What is the cost for something like this here?
Cost goes by the size of the agency. I don't have that right in front of me, but I can make sure that you receive that information.
How is that beneficial to the City of New Bern? How long, tell, let me back up. How long have we been credited by this organization?
How long is the, the police agency chief, you know, a year?
I don't know the exact years, but I think it's fifteen or sixteen years.
So the fifteen, sixteen years that we've been on this accreditation with the organization, so we've been paying each time for, for the accreditation? So is it like a five year, one year, two year? How does that actually work?
We actually pay annually as in our annual budget.
And how does that benefit the City of New Bern?
It benefits the city greatly. You read across, then you see across America, police agencies violating citizens' rights, not having good practice and procedures as it pertains to rules of law, rules of evidence, things of that nature, abuse, police abuse. Those agencies pretty much don't follow accepted professional standards. We try, we strive to follow those standards. And as the chief executive, I can easily put standards on a piece of paper and say, okay, I have the best practices. And sometimes you heard the saying of you can't see the forest before the trees. I may think my agency is performing the duties as we say, what's on paper, but in fact, we may not be. So it's really beneficial to me as the chief executive to have someone from the outside to come in and say, okay, let's look, this is what you say you're going to do, let's see if this is what you're really doing. It protects our community and more importantly, it keeps our officers safe to make sure that we're using the best practices to keep them from harm.
So what about the state's standards? Do you have to pay them to come in to do the same thing or that's something entirely different? I'm just trying to ask help to folks out in the audience that's not understanding what's happening.
At this point, the state has no accreditation standards.
So we pay someone to come in to look at our records, to tell us what we need to do or what we not do.
Right, right. If they find shortcomings, then you'll certainly advise us and we'll make corrective action. If we don't have the most current policy, the most up-to-date policy, they will certainly let us know and we will make adjustments there. If we say that, for example, our handcuffing techniques is A, B, C, and they observe that we're not doing that, they will certainly let us know. If we're not keeping our high liability property and evidence in proper format so that when you go to court and testify, we can say the chain of custody has been done according to policy, they'll let us know.
But that's based on what someone else is doing from what he just said earlier on, if I'm understanding correctly. So that means out of fifteen years, that the standards that they've been teaching you guys, you're not able to follow them. You just need someone to come in to look over you to make sure that that's what you're doing. Is that correct?
Not saying that at all, sir. I'm saying that we are able to follow them, but we want assurance that, you know, we're assuring our community by allowing that outside agents to come and say, yes, what the chief say is true.
So you're saying it's worth twenty-five thousand dollars every five years to have this done? Because we didn't get an amount, how much it costs, so I'm just playing with some numbers.
I don't, I don't know if twenty-five thousand dollars is the amount, but I do think it's worth.
What is it, five thousand dollars a year?
I, I believe it's somewhere around four or five thousand dollars a year. Yes, sir.
Would you know that, Mr. Finance Director, sir?
Yes, sir. Since you're asking a question, I've looked it up. We're paying the Commission on Accreditation for Law four thousand six hundred forty-six dollars a year. We budget almost ten thousand dollars a year for this program to allow for additional training and whatnot for the officers so that way they can continue to maintain these standards.
And the additional money is to attend conferences, to be exposed to the best practices, to bring them back to the city and to incorporate them.
So you feel very strong on the accreditation, that that's the way?
Yes, sir.
How many other agencies in this region that is credited besides us that you know at the top of your?
I can certainly get you that information. I don't want to give you.
No, 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 I don't need you to get that. I just thought maybe you knew some other ones that you saw to work with and talked with on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, there are, there are several, there are, there are quite a few, matter of fact, in the, in the state of North Carolina. But as the gentleman said, I think you said it's only a thousand nationwide? A thousand nationwide.
So that means there's not any in this region then?
Oh, there is some in this region, yes.
Like Havelock, Morehead City, Kentstown, Goldsboro, Raleigh?
Morehead City, yes. Probably, I'm not so sure about Goldsboro, but I know Raleigh and Durham, those places. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll just ask some questions, something I didn't understand, I want other folks to understand exactly what's going on. You know, if they ask me a question, I said, I pretty much cover some of the bases. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, Alderman, hold on.
Yes, sir. Chief, is there a report after their study is concluded that can be shared with us? Because I don't know that I've ever seen one after this has been reaccredited.
There will be. We have about two weeks to get it to the Commission and then it takes about two weeks to process it. You send to the chief and then the chief can share it as he sees fit. And I'm sure he'll share it here. You know, when, when you talk about whether it's worth it or not, it's like proactive policing, proactive administration. When a police officer makes a car stop and he gets a gun off the street, you don't know what homicide's been stopped, you don't know what robbery's been stopped. When you live up the best practices and police officers are doing exactly what they should be according to best standards, you never know who didn't get hurt, you never know what lawsuit you didn't have to defend because you are actually living the best standards and best practices time and time again. So I know that's why a lot of agencies get involved. That's why St. Louis County, every agency was ordered to become accredited was because many agencies weren't living up to best practices. So that's what, what the Commission can bring to the agency.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just very simply, how long is this process going to take? How long will you be here? What is the length of process?
We arrive Monday and we will leave on Thursday, so we're here for four days. But there's already been an off-site review where an expert has already looked at the four hundred and eighty-four standards and then they let us know if they find any irregularities. And then we look at those and then everything else we do is through interview-based interviews for the most part. And we talk to people, spent time with the IA commander today. They talked about the processes they follow when complaints are filed, processes that are followed when use of force incidents occur. And we make sure that those are being, are consistent with Kalia's best practices.
So then you'll, you go back, do this report, so we'll know if we're accredited, accredited or not in a few weeks, is that?
A few weeks, you'll, you'll have the report and then the, the agency goes before the Board of Commissioners. If there'll be asked questions about the report and then the Board of Commissioners makes the final recommendation for accreditation.
I do want to make note that your question about the report, every year, the agency for files that are reviewed remotely, they do get a report annually based on what files are reviewed. We just are at the end of the four years, we provide an overall of what we've seen when we've come here onsite and, you know, our interaction with the agency and what we review.
I had a quick question. You stated that you do off-site interviewing with police officers and citizens?
Yes.
How do you know, how are you interviewing the citizens? Like, where are you going into different communities? How are you able to get these interactions? Because if you're doing the standard, you know, we have different communities, some might view and make different statements on how they feel about the police department. So are you kind of going to all the communities so that you're getting a general understanding of how we operate or is it just specific neighborhoods?
No, we, first, we have several areas of focus that are agreed upon by the agency and the Commission. We look at those. And then there's a list of other folks we ask to speak with, such as local clergies. I know there was some local clergy in today that we spoke with, owners, homeowner associations. We do ask if there's any civil rights group in the area that we at least be able to make a phone call or have it, have some time to interview with them. We do our best to reach out to every portion of the community to get feedback.
Thank you.
Yes. Out of the fifteen years of doing this year, so the score has been a hundred, hundred? Ninety-five, eighty-five? I'm just asking a question, I don't know. Out of the accreditation?
I can only speak for the years that I've been here, which is eight. We've been pretty successful. I do know that I have been put to task in front of the actual Commission on certain things such as our hiring practices in terms of diversity and things of that nature, and they've given us some suggestions on how to approve, approve that. We also, at one point, I think you will find in the previous year, we had some minor issue with our evidence storage over in our tow yard and we corrected them.
Any, Mr. Asher? Tucson.
Yes.
I commend you and your staff for becoming accredited and maintaining your accreditation for the past fifteen years. It's a blessing to this city to know that our police department is accredited as well as our recreation department is accredited and hopefully soon, the fire department's moving in the same direction. They're going through some of the steps now, so I commend you and your staff for a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, this time, let's go back to petitions of citizens. If you'd like to come forward, sir, and state your name and address for the record, we'd be glad to hear your four minutes worth of comments.
I'm a new resident in New Bern. I was brought here by the company because I built the right-of-way department. I've even done work for here in the city, as you know from First Street. I have to work all the time and I have to have available to me the means of getting drawings, contracts, and other paperwork out to the landowners that are affected by the projects that NCDOT does. I was brought here because they needed an Eastern North Carolina office. The whole right-of-way department works from home. We have to have all our facilities so that we can send out the maps. We also have to have some way, excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize. When I moved here, we started looking for a home. Have we looked all over?
Yeah, magnate address for the records.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Bobby, forgive me. My name is Ray Dorman, eleven oh eight Amber Jack Court, New Bern. We were never told there was no internet. We were never told there was no phone lines. The lines are sticking out of the houses that we have all bought. We've all been told it's coming, but I've been here sixteen months and I haven't seen it yet. I've been in numerous contacts with numerous people and the only one that's even seemed to come close is Mr. Spencer Wallston of Suddenlink. Suddenlink has continually put us off. Every month, there's another project that they're going to go start and we're put on the back burner again. The folks that are here with me tonight are in the same shape I'm in. We work using the internet and we don't have it, so we have to go find internet service somewhere. I have a child in school here. She needs internet so that she can do her homework. My wife does it. She works from home also. She has to go find internet. Therefore, we're driving all over when we shouldn't have to. We're asking for some help from the city since we're in the city limits. You folks annexed us last year. I'm the first one who bought a house there. Adam's the second one that bought a house there. We've been putting up with this for almost sixteen months. We just ask someone, give us some help. Mr. Asher has tried. He has talked to numerous people that Suddenlink and Altus, we're still getting kicked the can down the roof. We'll get to you, don't worry, just be patient. There's always another project, always. We need some help. We need to get internet and telephone out there. This is a nine-one-one concern for us that have families out there. Cell phones are great. Cell phones don't always get nine-one-one when you need them. They need that landline, so we would like to see some way. I mean, if you can get water lines, sewer lines, electric lines, everything in City of New Bern out there where we are. Everything else is out there. We just don't have internet and we don't have phone. We're asking for the city to help us in some way.
Let me, do you mind?
Okay, right, sir.
You not only, you do not have internet, you do not have cable TV, and you have no telephone service. Is that correct?
The only thing available right now is Hughes Net. And if you know anything about Hughes Net, you may as well have nothing.
Okay. Well, I just informed the mayor a few minutes ago before we came in. Yesterday, the mayor and myself was, was in a meeting with some staff members with the engineer for Blue Order Rise. During that meeting, I brought up whatever we need to do to put pressure in onto Suddenlink to get service out there. Today, I received an email from Suddenlink saying that the equipment has been ordered and they hope to have a contractor on the ground within just a few weeks.
We'd be very grateful to you.
I hope, I hope that takes place, but that is as of an hour ago, the email that I received from Thomas Engineering, that that's what they told him today. So equipment's on, it's been ordered, it's supposed to be on site and hopefully in a few weeks, the contractor will be there to, equipment's going to be on site. Hopefully in a few weeks, you'll have a, a solution to your problem.
Bobby, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Yeah, let's, let's stay on, let's stay on touch with this though. I want to continue on. Yes, ma'am.
Why is CenturyLink not out there?
I don't know. Well, I mean, nobody, we've had the city manager involved in it, the city attorney involved in it, and we have no authority whatsoever to make them go in there. You know, it used to, we used to have authority over the cable companies, but, Mr. City Manager?
CenturyLink is regular phone service, landline. I just.
We have nothing.
We have the ability to basically do zoning to allow uses of property. Several years, we used to have, municipalities did have some control over franchising of cable services and TV services and internet services and things of such. Do you remember what year it was? Eight or ten years ago, the state of North Carolina removed local control to some extent over franchising of, of those types of services within municipal city limits. So therefore, at this point, the only influence we have is kindly worded or strongly worded, whichever one you want to use depending on how frustrated you are with it, letters or conversations with those individuals who operate those companies. The only other recourse of action would be is if they were, individuals who bought in that neighborhood were told that it was a full-service community and all of those services were provided and whenever they bought a home, then they would have some legal recourse to potentially go to the developer who sold them that property. But other than that, we as a municipality were stripped basically of all, of our ability to do anything with any kind of communications or television services by the state of North Carolina.
I expressed, I expressed my concern yesterday with the developers, the fact that they did not. I expressed, I expressed my concern yesterday with the developers, the fact that they did not disclose to the homeowners that they do not have that service and don't know when they'll get the service.
As each one of these people can tell you, the cables are sticking out of the side of our house. There's jacks all through our house. My real estate agent, their real estate agent, the developer, all told us, we're not sure exactly when it's gonna be there, but it'll be there shortly. Almost quote, every one of us was told, same quote. If I'm a real estate broker, I have to be at every state I work in. Therefore, I know there's certain things about disclosure. It wasn't disclosed to us. Therefore, we all feel like we have been lied to. We're just asking not for anyone to cause problems, just please help us. And like you say, it looks like you are.
I, I think, I think we're a step closer today than we were yesterday, so let's just, we'll stay in touch and we'll stay on them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Almanaz, the only thing I would say to our meeting yesterday is I'm getting a little gun shy with the amount of time it's taken and I'm a little bit in prejudice about them being in here in two weeks. And as the checks and balance, time being in the essence, I would recommend that the manager and the attorney and you as alderman, myself and one other alderman arrange a meeting with a top regional executive with Suddenlink so we can have an understandable misunderstanding that in about two or three weeks that these folks are gonna be getting internet. It's your award, if you want to do that, that would be my thought. Do you wanna do that?
Sure, as much pressure as we can put on.
Mr. Stevens, can you arrange that? And I'm not talking about the local New Bern rep, I'm talking about getting somebody in here. That we have some concise succinct information on when this is gonna come to closure.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. This time, it's gonna item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of properties in Martin Marietta Park identified as portions of tax parcel numbers eight dash two four four dash zero two one, eight dash two four four dash zero three three, eight dash two four four dash two thousand, eight dash two four four dash four thousand, eight dash two four two oh nine six, and all of tax parcel eight dash two four four nine thousand from I one and I two industrial districts to R ten residential district. Please keep in mind, Board, that if you consider changing this zoning, you will need to first adopt a statement of zoning consistency. And then after that, if you wish to do so, adopt an ordinance rezoning the identified properties that I just mentioned. So, at this time, I want to turn it over to Mr. Stevie Orr. He's gonna come up and give you a quick presentation and an introduction to this item.
Mayor Outlaw, Board of Aldermen, I'd just like to put something on the overhead for you real quick. So this is a site map of the area in question. The yellow area on there is the R ten zoning district and the grayed-out area is the area that we're talking about changing tonight. The reason for this rezoning is to be able to use the space for a public outdoor recreational facility, which the I two zoning district does not allow. And change it to the R ten zoning district. As you can see, it's kind of surrounded a lot by a lot of yellow there, a lot of residential zoning. It's a very consistent zoning district with the surrounding area. Most of this area is not really on buildable land. A lot of this is water. So there's no real concerns for development impacts or anything adverse from the surrounding land uses. And it will, it'll be required in order to proceed with the park project, which will also require a special use permit after the rezoning occurs.
The only question I have about that, and I don't know where I'm gonna do it now or after the vote here, but you know, like if we were to contractually arrange for some type of a hot dog hamburger stand or something out there that we would lease out, this would not be precluded under residential zoning? As far as your conceptual design of the layout, are there things that might be offered out there that would be precluded under the residential zoning?
No, sir. So when the project goes before the Board of Adjustment, all the various types of uses that you typically find inside of a public park or recreational facility would be discussed and accounted for and it would be permitted through the special use permit that would be granted by the Board of Adjustment.
So the special use permit then is what allows you the different classifications? Such as like he said concessions, if there is an amphitheater and music and venues and all of that that are gonna require things that's all covered under, and listed under the special use. They won't have to come back each time something gets developed inside the park? For another special, will one special use permit cover?
So when they go for the Board of Adjustment for the special use permit, the site plan will have to include all improvements that they're proposing. If they have any major alterations to that, they will have to go back to modify their special use permit because those approvals are site-specific and that's just the way the process works for that. But it doesn't interfere with anything that you might find in any other publicly owned park or recreation facility.
Well, the only thing about that is this park's probably a little different from most parks, all the other parks we've had with our partnerships. Alderman, any other comments? At this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. If anybody'd like to come up and ask any questions, make any comments or statements concerning this item, we're welcome to come up at this time.
Mayor, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion second, close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Almanaz favor the motion, say, or opposed, say, motion carries?
Mayor, if there's any other questions or statement, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt a statement of zoning consistency for properties in Martin Marietta Park identified as parcel, tax parcels, eight two forty-four zero twenty-one, eight two forty-four zero thirty-three, eight two forty-four two thousand, eight two forty-four four thousand, eight two forty-two oh ninety-six, and all of tax parcel eight two forty-four nine thousand from I one and I two industrial districts to R ten residential district.
Second.
Okay, we have motion number seconds and discussion. See, and I'm just having a roll call starting with Almanaz Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Henze?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt an ordinance rezoning the afford said parcels, identified properties in Martin Marietta Park.
Second.
Motion for the aldermen, best seconded by Alderman Oden, is there discussion? See, and I'm just having a roll call starting with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Henze?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris? Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Davis, we need anything else on that item?
No, sir.
It's got item number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a discussion of the Gant neighborhood traffic issue at the request of Alderman Astor and Alderman Bingle. They wanted this item to be on the agenda so that the board could have some discussion regarding the traffic concerns that's been expressed by the Gant community.
Mr. Stevens and Steve Attorney, is Second Street in violation of our code?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge, no, sir. I, I think the discussion is conflating three, three different concepts. Conflating zoning with street design standards with new subdivision design standards. And when you mix those together, you don't come to the conclusion that streets are constrained to certain traffic flows forever and ever. Although there's certainly general rules of thumb that traffic, you know, experts require that we, or suggest that we follow, but these are not legal violations in my view. But I would be very happy to speak to any class action attorney who represents local governments with specific street expertise.
All right, what do you, what do you recommend that we do for this Second Street problem? Mr. City Manager?
Well, you know, I think, just kind of, I'm gonna try to touch on a few of the points. Not all of them, but you know, some of the, some of the issues. You know, I arrived here eight, eight and a half years ago now. And from this, from that point, I remember going to Gant community meetings when nothing existed in that community. And we mentioned at that time that we were going to, you know, look at some of the strategies in which we could do some traffic calming. I mean, it was everything from traffic bumps to, you know, stop signs to closing off streets to whatever it may be. And I think Alderman Booker at the time attended. I'm not sure Alderman Bingle might have been there, but I know we held him at the YMCA. That was quite some years ago, like I said. And that was when the, the stop signs you started seeing throughout the community to help calm the traffic and the cut-through traffic and the speeding, which were some of the major issues at the time. Obviously, that led to additional signs being installed on park. It also led to additional signs being installed on rim. And so all of that time, we have been, I think, quite responsive to the community to some extent. Maybe not to the liking of some, but we have been responsive to the requests of the community to look at traffic issues. Moving on to where we are today, one of the reasons why we installed what we did during the time that we did is because it was brought to our attention that there was an extreme amount of cut-through traffic due to construction-related activities that were on First Street, people trying to bypass those. And so, you know, it was kind of, I guess, a, an opportunity for us to see what would happen if we were able to put those measures in place to divert traffic away from that community to keep them from cutting through, increasing, increasing concerns. I think there were some pictures of twenty cars stacked up at a stop sign. Well, during construction, oftentimes you'll see that, people trying to find other ways around so that they can avoid construction. Once that construction was completed and the road was opened up on First Street, which I'm understanding there was quite a few people that are pleased with the outcome of that, the, the temporary measures were removed. That's the reason why we removed them. Under, I guess, from a legal perspective, you know, we can't just willy-nilly come in and throw up a bunch of stuff in the street and block it off, make them one way because all of those items are covered in our ordinances. They are laws. Enforceable laws so that our policemen can enforce those. We can't just come up and put up stuff without direction from the board. So we did that in a measure to divert because of public safety traffic and try to keep that cut-through traffic on Second Street out of that community. Where we are now, I guess if you want to ask what my recommendation is, and as a professional engineer licensed in North Carolina, Virginia, and civil engineering, and I took my exams in highway engineering, my recommendation is now that you have a fully functioning First Street and you have a workforce development center that is open that now houses fifty-eight students at it and operating classes, I went over and took a picture of the boards today of the students they have enrolled, which is quite impressive actually. Understanding that there's probably still some items that will need to be opened up and things that will need to happen there, I think it's probably appropriate for us to come back over there and, and do a traffic count. The numbers I think that were mentioned tonight is traffic counts that were performed, what, four years ago, five, maybe three, four, five years ago? When we studied what the traffic counts were on Second Street, I think, you know, there was a high number on one day and I'm sure it was probably on the YMCA athletic fields, kids practicing on the Saturday or something like that, lots of generated traffic or whatever. But there, throughout the week, the majority of it was in the fourteen-hundred count. And that was when we had our city fueling facility open. That's when the county was also fueling there. That's when carts was fueling there. That's when also the warehouse was open and all of our vehicles and everybody, every piece of city machinery that needed to come get fuel or needed to come get assets to be able to put in infrastructure throughout our city came to the warehouse to get all of that. Our electric department was also operating out of there. So I think it would probably be prudent for us to either, one, do some study of the area, get some numbers, some new numbers, so that we can determine what is actually going on there. And that takes time in analyzing the streets, you put in, you know, traffic counters. You also can put in the device that the police department has, which also can determine speed and traffic counts and the times of which the traffic counts and days of the traffic counts are higher. And at that point, we have some comparison data because we're going off old data when all of our stuff was operational versus now when we have a newly constructed street that's handling traffic and also we have a volt center which is operational, but it's not a fueling facility because we've moved all that to Glemberg and everything else because we've heard the concerns of the community of all the city vehicles that were cut through. So those are some of the things that, that I would recommend. The second thing is if the board wishes to direct me to do so, I am happy to seek some professional engineers in the private sector who do traffic studies and do a traffic study of the community. So those are basically the two options that I would recommend at this time.
I, I recommend that before we look at hiring an engineering firm to go out and do the traffic study, that we at least get the counts and see what the true numbers are today. With the new, with the new road out there and the fueling station gone, I think it would be in our best interest, at least it would be mine. I'd love to know exactly what the traffic counts is on that road. I mean, I've heard anything from three hundred to three thousand.
And, and once again, my concern is, is, is say you do make a change to Second Street, unless you deeply analyze what that traffic will actually do, they may move to using Third Street.
Well, you know, we, we receive complaints from the people down there.
Right, the, the even streets not making connection to Trent Road, well, Third Street makes a connection. So that's one block over. And then at that point, all you're doing is pushing the problem down a block, down two blocks. So I really think it's probably advisable to, to actually look at this thing, get the counts, see what the numbers are. Let's, I, I would, I would probably say, in, in my, my opinion, in my assumption, of course, that the traffic counts have probably reduced. But I've been proven wrong on other cases and, and if that's the case, then, then we can address it at that point.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Do you want to speak?
Mayor, just a question.
Save the best for last.
Well, then I'll let you go.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Savatelli, do you know how many vehicles we have in our city fleet total? Just a rough, math maybe, just a rough idea of how many city vehicles?
Three hundred and fifty-some vehicles. Not including equipment. It doesn't include the county vehicles and it doesn't include carts.
When, when did we open up? Cause now we have, now we have three fueling sites, correct? We have one on Kale Road, we have one at our new fueling station, and then we have one at Jordan's new facility, Water Resources. So when, when did those new fueling resources come online? Roughly what year?
Kale Road, Kale Road came online when the electric department completed their construction, which would have been towards the end of the previous board's last term, I think.
Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Somewhere right around there. Well, that was, that was, that was when we, it was after that. That was when we actually made, it was, it was more like a sixteen, I would think. By the time the construction was completed and the, the gas tanks were installed. Jordan's ribbon cutting, I think, was last fall. Is that correct, Jordan? Yes, so last fall and then we just did the ribbon cutting back this winter for the garage, which was in January, February, February, so relatively, all, all relatively recent.
I, I agree with Alderman Astor. I think we need, we need to look at that data. In the meantime, I think if there are blatant violations that we've been made aware of that's taking place in that corridor, I think the police needs to have a constant presence there. And you need to increase the revenue of the city coffers and send some messages in the meantime while we wait for this data to get through. If people are rolling through stop signs, then that needs to be addressed. I, I'm not saying that at the end of the day, when the data comes back, it may say that we do need to close the street. But in my opinion, I'm certainly not a professional engineer like you. I don't have a certificate. But if people are violating the, the road ordinances and the speeds and the stop signs, you don't typically close the street because of that. You enforce the law that's there and you send a message to make sure they get that. I would be in favor of taking that first step and I support Alderman Astor in that. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Based on the statement that Mr. Foster made in regards to the general statute, are we currently not in compliance with how that road should be, that street should be operated in regards to residential and the commercial traffic that's coming through, the through traffic?
No, ma'am. I don't believe we're in violation of our city codes. And, and just.
And, and just to address one other thing, the, the double yellow line that was installed, that was installed, quite frankly, at the request of the neighborhood because the way that street has a little bit of narrowing from where the city garage, basically you have a street that comes down, has curbing, as it comes down and reaches just past the city garage, the curbing stops and it narrows down relatively quickly. So that was done to assist drivers, which we can install that on every street if we needed to. It was done to kind of assist motorists with keeping up with the alignment of the road.
My last comment would be, I think it's important that we make sure that we are looking at all aspects of the situation because there are homeowners, there's children there. And I too, if I lived on this street and they had all this traffic coming through, my kids playing outside, I have to worry about whether they're gonna get hit by a car, I understand that. And I also understand that it's been years in the making that people have utilized this street to get to where they need to go. But I feel like I support what Mr. Alderman Astor wants to do. But also we need to think of finding a happy medium because everyone in the city, like Mr. Wood says and Randy, Mr. Foster, they are tax-paying citizens and they both have equal rights and equal voice and equal concerns. And what I think about is I don't want anyone to sell their house and move out of the city of New Bern because, one, we're able to do the things we do based on the fact that our citizens pay taxes and that's how we take care of a lot of things in the city. And I feel like, you know, we don't want them to move out of the community, so we have to find a happy medium. And I think what Bobby suggests is gonna be what we need to do. And then like Jeff said, if it comes back and we need to do some enforcement, I feel like the first step would be having law enforcement more present in that neighborhood, in that area to enforce. So I do agree with my counterparts on that regard and that's what I have to say.
Passing authority.
Passing authority. I represent this ward, these are the citizens of my ward, and I would challenge each of my fellow aldermen who would not stand up and support their, their citizens in their neighborhoods as I am going to do right now. You know, neighborhoods are the asset, are the jewels in the crown of this city. That's what makes this city what it is. And I serve the oldest neighborhoods in this city, the oldest neighborhoods in the city. And they're neighborhoods for a reason. And nobody, all of y'all, think about where you live. None of you would want this back and forth and this cut, all it is is a cut through. It's not that a destination, it is a cut through. And it does concern me. And I, I heard them, I saw them, I sat there on the corner and I watched the traffic. You know, we talk about the city garage is gone, but now we've got a Volt Center. Yes, I'm thankful for the sixty students, but, but in a year, that could be a hundred and fifty students. And then we're gonna have a city market with entertainment and farmer's market and all the stuff, well, that could bring another hundred people. So, you know, this is, we've got these grandiose plans, so now here comes right back the number of cars that we said we were gonna delete. We could do the traffic study now and you might see fifty cars. But then what's gonna happen in six, nine months when you have three hundred cars? We've just seen one scenario where we're not looking at the total picture of what I think the traffic's going by there. I will admit that I was contacted by the citizens who lived on Rim and Third because what people were doing then was going around and, and taking traffic, trying to buck the system of going around and trying to cut through. They have concerns and I, I listen to them. You know, I'd like to see Trent Road cut off and let this neighborhood be, be whole so you can't cut through Gant to get to Country Club, take first. If you need to get to the church, if you need to get to the YMCA, you can come down Park or Fifth, I believe it is, Fifth or Seventh has the, has the thing. But, you know, everybody wants their neighborhoods protected. Look at, where, where is it that you live, Cypress?
Morton Road.
Morton Road out there. You know, that was fixed because the neighborhood did not want all that traffic coming in there. You know, Alderman Odom, I would ask you, if this was Greenbrier, you'd have every one of those Greenbrier residents here talking about not wanting through traffic and cut through traffic. I, I'm assured of that. And I'm concerned that this is just one slice of the pie of New Bern, because I think there's traffic issues. You know, we already have a committee of people together talking about East Front Street and the cut through there. We've got people now cutting through because the roads have been repaired from clean. Over there, Tawburna, people are concerned about Airport Road, Tawburna Circle, those areas. So if, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna study traffic, we might look at our whole city because the idea is we have to protect our neighborhoods, that's the value of our city. If we don't, we're not gonna have neighborhoods anymore, they're just gonna be places where people scatter through. And that's the beauty of who we are. People are out walking, biking, we spent all that time and money, you know, researching bike lanes and it's good for us. Well, you know, I, I think it's important that we listen to the residents and as their aldermen, I've listened to them, I've seen, I support. Now, we don't have to close the road, but we sure better put one ways or something to deter the traffic so it's not a cut through from Trent to, to Country Club. I just don't wanna see a cut through. If you want to have a leisurely drive through there and see this beautiful neighborhood or any of our neighborhoods in the city, that's what you should do, but it should not be a cut through.
Mr. Mayor, okay, you wanna go first?
Yes, I can. Well, you know, I, I think, looking at the road now, that they've got the construction on the road finished over there, and when you come right off of the ramp from, on Country Club Road, from the highway, the turn signal is right there now for people to cut, cut through that street. I think that is just the, the error on the street, right there by the park, Lawson Creek Park, there's an error with, for a left turn right there, I think that just added to the problem. Do you know, you know, are you, speaking of? I think that just added to the problem of people cutting through Second Street.
I guess that's the access to the Y and to the big church there, I think, maybe that was, I don't know.
Don't you?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's inviting people to take a left turn.
Exactly. So, you know, and I agree with you, I think there should be no left or right turns off of Trent Road going on to First or Second Street, I mean, Second or Third Street. I think that would eliminate some of the problem as well. Office, you know, I'm speaking of?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there, I, I don't, I don't think that we should.
My last comment too, when you were speaking about the neighborhoods and the history behind it, we as citizens still have to understand that our city grows. And so having the Volt Center there, I mean, you can't move into a neighborhood and not expect growth. And I mean, on the side of business.
Control the traffic then, let's control how, the, the ingress and egress of that traffic. You know, make it so they can't take a left turn or a right turn or come into the neighborhood. You know, plan, plan for the future, you know, planned growth is the way you do things. You don't just stick something, you plan it, you think about it and you look at the impact right now. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, if a new sub-development, if a developer came in here and wanted to build a sub, you know, subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, sorry. They would have to abide, have to have a traffic pattern, would have to have all of that information correct for us to approve it, is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes.
All right, so these neighborhoods have been here for two hundred years, you know, like plus years. So, you know, that, that wasn't the case back in the day, so should they suffer? Because the growth around it, we just should control it and if we see issues, we should try to correct them, that's what we're here to do.
I just, I wanna be on the side of, in, you know, being inclusive instead of exclusive and making it feel like no one is welcomed into the community except for the residents that live there and pay taxes.
No, everybody's welcome, they just don't want people cutting through. It's like, you know, cutting through your neighborhood to get to someplace.
Well, I live in a circle, so I, I live in a circle.
Why, why can't you just make it a right turn only at Trent and Second and put them right back out on First? And eventually they're gonna quit going through there.
I guess that's some of what the study would, would show.
But that's a city-maintained street, right? We owned it, that's a city-owned street, correct? And we maintain that street.
We, we, we maintain it, technically we own it in trust. We do not own a street, we own it in trust and we are obligated to keep it open as a public right of way for the travel of traffic unless you change it to an option of a pedestrian-only traffic, Courtney.
Mark, in this study that's gonna come before, that you plan on putting together, early on we were speaking about if the street function does not work, that we would go back and bring it back to a folie. Was, was that a part of a conversation early on?
That was just an option for us on the First Street if we deemed that the First Street was not being successful. So that's, that's, still remains an option because the, the benefit of the First Street, of what we did, we resurfaced the entire length of the street and it's easy to take up striping and change it back if that's what you wanted to do because we didn't adjust the curbing or make any width adjustments or put an island in the middle of it. It essentially, we maintained the, the multidirectional turn lane in the middle to allow people the free movement of left and right turns or whatever they need to do. So, yes, you could go back if you wanted to, but, but that's, that's.
I'm just bringing it up because it was a conversation that we had early on. I, I don't know what's gonna alleviate anything, 'cause I'm not an engineer there, but you know, that, that's something that we could go back to look at along with, uh, looking at what was discussed early on.
Okay, just for clarification, right? I'm looking at this map this way, okay, where the GSI is down at the bottom. I'm looking at Second Street. So you're telling me that people.
See, they're coming here, it's on the straight to get to Trent.
Okay, so they're coming off the high, so the concern is they're coming off the highway and going to Second.
Or they're coming Trent, they're cutting in both directions.
Or Trent, but no one's coming from this street to go here, to go, okay.
It's the cut through there. Mr. Davis, to put one ways in there, that requires a resolution. Okay, what is, what is the process to make, not close the street, but make them one ways or try to?
To amend the code?
Excuse me?
Amend the city code.
So it's a resolution we'd have to.
An ordinance, it's a law, that's man.
To go through and change. I would, you know, it would be my preference if we did nothing else but one ways to try to stop some of that traffic coming off Trent and, and coming off Country Club. Because if they come one way from either direction, and we talked about that early on, I believe, Mr. Stevens, you and I had that conversation about a year ago, that, that was a good suggestion about the one ways.
I, I was merely providing suggestions, I'm not saying it was a good one. I think, I, I think the good suggestion, I, I mean, literally you could cul-de-sac Second Street, you could one-way it, you could close it. There's tons of suggestions. I, I think the recommendation here that should, should be looked at, like I said, is either, one, gather the data to compare it with what you had, so that you can see the change. And then if you see that there is some change and it still warrants us to do something, I mean, we all think we're experts in traffic engineering because we all drive cars. That is not the case, because what's gonna happen is that they're studying, they will study the traffic generating standpoints of the YMCA. They will study the, the Temple Baptist Church, they will study the days of which degenerated traffic counts cause certain movements at every single intersection at those locations. And what they also do is they play that against scenarios in computer modeling to determine what impact it's gonna have at other locations and intersections throughout that community. Because like I said, the last thing you want to do, because we are both, we are all motorists and drivers, is make a change that may cause another problem down the road, which may be on Third, I think, who was it, Mr. Aiken? Mr. Aiken's probably not gonna be a very happy man if he lives on Third or Fourth or Fifth or whatever down the road and now all the traffic generated is coming down his street because we made one-way traffic changes on Second. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Do, what do you need to proceed with the traffic counts? Just a, do we need a motion or do we?
I think it would be, I think it would be advisable if you wanna move forward with the traffic counts to give me direction to pursue, I mean, we can do that regardless. I mean, we can gather that data, now that everything's open, I mean, it just recently got open. But if you wanna move forward with the study, that's gonna cost money. And so what my recommendation would be, if you wanna move forward with the study, is to give me direction to seek quotes and then I will bring you back a quote, just like we do anything else and request a budget amendment that's going to include that study.
Yeah, I would like to see the traffic count first and see if it warrants a engineer or not.
Question on the, I guess, the RFD or RFQ, whichever one, if you did that, we're not obligated to accept those, are we?
Uh, no, you're not.
So they could do that in conjunction with reviving the, citing the, uh, traffic counts. That way if traffic counts come back and we're surprised and there's more traffic than we thought and we feel like we need to do a study that we've already got it done.
I agree with that.
I, I think you're probably, I mean, we've got some preliminary quotes on, from one firm. Obviously, we could look at multiple firms, but we, we've got one from one firm, I think it was twenty, was it Matt, twenty thousand? He's talking, I think, anyways, but that, twenty thousand on that quote, is that correct?
Twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty to twenty-five, that was just off the top of his head, that's looking at twenty to twenty-five thousand for the traffic study. But that's the entire, that's the entire area basically, I think, was from Fifth to First, is that correct?
Uh, yes, including Country Club Road and.
Including Country Club and Trent Road and analyzing all of that. So if we were to do the traffic counts and gather that information, it may be that we can help reduce some of that cost. But, you know, that, that's the real, that's the reality of what you're dealing with if you are looking at a study.
And I just wanna make sure, I, I want to be on record that I support the residents of Gant in fixing this traffic issue, that I support Second Street, if, at minimum one-way signs, and I just wanna be on record. If you wanna do a study, you wanna count, I mean, I'm one person.
I, I agree.
I total, I've heard them loud and clear, I went to their neighborhood association meeting, I've heard the residents loud and clear and I would do this for any other neighborhood in my ward.
And I, I'll go on record saying the same thing. However, when we closed the street, we were receiving complaints from people living down Rim of all the traffic going down there. So I think before we do anything, we should find out exactly how much traffic's coming through there.
I'm just concerned that you're gonna see a minimum, it's gonna increase as the growth of the Volt Center and other things happen there. You're going to see increased tra, traffic, so hopefully we put a percentage number in there.
Well, maybe we can close that exit like we talked about, out of the Volt Center.
Yeah, I agree.
Make it a left turn out of the Volt Center only and exit only.
The city attorney said that we would not be able to legally do that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a public street, so.
Not the private driveway out of the Volt Center?
On, on, onto Second Street, yeah.
On Rim Street? The driveway coming out of the Volt Center onto Rim Street, can we not make that driveway a left turn only to keep the traffic from going back into the Gant neighborhood?
Not unless it's a one-way street. We'd have to make it a one-way street.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about our property.
Yeah, we, we can stripe, we can stripe property, maybe we want, it's just like a, a stop sign in Walmart. It's a stop sign, but it's not a, a legal violation. But we can certainly stripe our own property to encourage something. But, but the police officers couldn't cite someone if they violated that, that arrow painted on the street.
Then why don't we put a stop sign there?
For safety, they do it for safety, they want to encourage people to be safe and slow.
But, but, but let me be clear, if on our property, we built a concrete median that only allows traffic to turn left, then they have no.
That's, that's our property, that's exactly right. Yeah, on our property. I thought you were just suggesting a, a no-left turn sign.
But again, even if you build a concrete, they could pull out, go around it and turn right and there's no enforceability.
But my help, sir.
Sure.
Board can give direction, I think you wanna unify a voice, whether the board stands or you just get a motion.
Okay, well then I make the motion that we authorize the city manager to perform a traffic study so we can get true and accurate counts of the traffic that is on Second Street. Now, I don't know, I'll use it to, where you put the traffic or do the traffic counts, I'll let you decide that since you're the traffic engineer.
This is just for the traffic count, not the twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's right, just a traffic count, using our equipment.
Second question, what's the timeframe, are we measuring it for a day, a week, a month, what's the normal time?
How often? Normally we look at a week, week's worth of data.
And from time to time, I mean, you know, eight AM to five AM?
Twenty-four hours a day.
Does twenty-four hours a day, wow.
You know, I don't know when, when or how, but.
We can wait until September.
Well, you can do it again in September if we have to.
We could do it again in September.
So what are we gonna do between then and now if they're still having issues?
Chief, Chief Summers is gonna give direction to his officers to enforce the law on that street.
Well, you know, after we had the neighborhood association meeting over there the other night, the officers that were there said that they were gonna start sitting out there. Do you know, Chief, if whether or not they? Do you know, um, Chief, if whether or not they issued any citations or whether they even were there or not? I'm sure you probably don't know.
No, sir, I don't know, but I do know we have quite a few intersections in the city that we have to monitor. So, I'm sure we get to them as quickly as we can.
Would you please ask your officers to pay some special attentions to thi- this particular road for a while?
Yes, sir, we'll do.
Uh, Mr. Woods, Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods, you're out, you're out of order, sir. Mister, uh, Mister Woods, I'm going to tell you. You had a motion and a second, Alderman Harris made the second. Now, Alderman Bingle, you were under the discussion, you had the question, page-
Yeah, I just asked, you know, what the length of time when we were going to do this, how we're going to do this. Um, I probably, you know, I, I want to do something. I, I mean, we're going to count cars, that's really nice, but I really, um, I, I want this neighborhood to feel safe. I want the flow of traffic to not be cutting through there, so I just don't, this is dragged on. A year ago, we tried to do this and couldn't get it anywhere yet, so I'm just, I'm really frustrated.
We've got to have updated information for us to make, uh, you know, a sound decision because like you heard, Mr. Wood, I mean, he's not in that community and he's a citizen of New Bern and has a concern about wanting to be able to use the street. So, for us to have factual data and information to say, okay, this is why we voted this way or this is why we didn't vote, we still need to get a traffic count, and then if school is out, I mean, I don't, you know, it's an issue. I wouldn't want to prolong it to September, but if that's also going to give- Yeah, but if you do it again, what's going to happen in between then? Are we going to put a closure on the street, are we going to make it a one-way? What are we going to do in between that because they still have the issue?
I don't think you're going to do anything until you see the most current data. Once we see the current data-
How would it be current if school is not out?
Well, if we see the current data and it's, in our opinions, there's not an issue or not as much of an issue as being portrayed, then we wait till September when school's in, then we do another traffic study. If the data comes back and it shows, hey, there really is a problem here, then we do something now. If it gets worse, if we do a one-way and it gets worse in school season and we make a change, then we can close it then. We can continue to make progress. My concern is, is that doing something to be doing something, I absolutely appreciate what Alderman Bingle is doing. You're right, I would do the same thing if it was Greenbrier. Um, but making decisions out of emotion and threats is not always the best rule, the best, best end result.
I've never been threatened.
Not, not, not you, not you, I'm saying the threats that we've gotten about being, being, um, you know, legal threats that we actually stated here tonight, as well as emails that we've received. We need to make the right decision, you can't make the right decision if you don't have the right data. If you ask all seven of us tonight what we think we should do, you'd probably get about seven variations. But we've got to get the data to figure out what we need to do.
I have had, for years, the residents of Bowlin Creek requesting that we close off Airport Road or actually close off Tburna Circle at Airport Road. And we've done traffic counts there and there is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cars that come through there between eight o'clock and, or seven o'clock and eight o'clock. I've had the police department sitting out there and, and, you know, monitoring things. And, I mean, it, it's, it's all over the city. I mean, we have city streets and people drive on. And, and I've recently had another request to close off Tburna Circle or make it one-way from Airport Road back out to the highway.
I say we get the data, I just, I don't want us to be in the business of closing, that's what I'm saying, we're just going to be closing off streets
Yeah, well, I don't think we should, every, every street, but we should be looking at, to protect neighborhoods and to train the traffic to go to the major roads rather than the, the smaller neighborhood roads.
Okay, this time we did have a motion and second, and Matt Thor, could you re, um, could you recite the, the, uh, motion?
To authorize the city manager to form a traffic study to get true and accurate counts on Second Street.
Okay, this time just to, uh, make sure we are orderly by this, several roll calls starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
No.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Now, is there any other item associated with number eight that we need to discuss before we move on? Let's get on number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, item number nine is, uh, consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of sixteen-twenty National Avenue. Um, as you may recall, the board previously deemed this, uh, property of sixteen-twenty National Avenue as surplus property. Uh, for those who are wondering what sixteen-twenty National Avenue is, that's the old fire station slash Parks and Recreation Administration building that was on National Avenue for some years. Uh, on the twenty-sixth of February, a resolution was adopted initiating the upset bid process after receiving an initial offer of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, several upset bids were received over the last four months. Final bid of forty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars was submitted by Freddie Mercer and the board is asked to consider selling the property, uh, for this offer. If the property is sold for this amount, proceeds of the sale and the insurance payout from Hurricane Florence will be approximately one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars less the cost to advertise. Uh, there's a memo included in your packet and happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the sale of sixteen-twenty National Avenue finally.
Motion and second, is there further discussion?
Mayor, just a question, Mark, what was the, um, sale price that we had on this property before the storm?
Eighty-five thousand, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, seeing none, other questions, discussion, let's have, yes?
This is a property that, um, I had, um, contact with Pastor, uh, Divine APR and I seen that we sold this property and he's constantly contacting me, asking me if there's any way that he can recover his earnest money on this property. And I'd said that I would present this to the board, um, and I know that legally, um, he was told that he could not receive his money back. Um, but now that we've received, um, uh, um, a sale, proceeds when we sell this property and we have monies from FEMA, is there any way that this board could exercise the thought of giving him back three thousand dollars of his earnest money?
It was three, just three?
No, it was forty, I think it was forty-two fifty, if I'm not mistaken.
Four thousand, two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, but he was just saying if he could just get some back, he would dearly appreciate it.
That's kind of a very absolute legal question answered, go ahead.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the board, of the few things it cannot do, one thing is give people money for no reason.
Right, by law, if, based on the contract, if he didn't, he had due diligence.
There was a whole mix-up with his contract when he was trying to get the money, he got the loan and then he found, realized that he was still married and is in the process of getting a divorce and that his wa- his wife would have legal access to that property, so that's when he decided he couldn't go through with the deal.
Hey, he could have, he could have handled that. So, so for me to understand, um, this person was going to purchase this property and he, okay, and so, who was the contract with, the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It, it, quite unfortunate, we, we, we went to great, great lengths to, to avoid any hardship to the potential buyer. Did, did all we could, moved heaven and earth to, to help, um, but in the end, he simply couldn't close. And, um, just like I mentioned earlier, we have a contract right to deposit, that's why we get a deposit because it's been time and money and effort.
I'm a realtor, I know, so.
It's, it's, I, I hate the answer, I wish it were different, but it, it is a legal answer and it ties your hands.
Yeah.
Okay, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor, item number ten is, uh, consideration of board to adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse for FY nineteen-twenty capital equipment purchases. On the twenty-eighth of May, the board adopted the budget, uh, for the fiscal year nineteen-twenty. Uh, the budget provided for the purchase of various vehicles and equipment not to exceed two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars according to the IRS regulations. A declaration of intent to reimburse must be adopted prior to or within sixty days of payment of the expenditures to be reimbursed. Uh, it's typical business that we do anytime we're going to be taking out loans for equipment, uh, and, and vehicles. Uh, the memo that's included in your packet from Mr. Savatelli outlines this and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, the equip, the vehicles, is this for the, um, fire trucks?
Yes, right there.
So, can you just tell me all of the vehicles, is there like a thousand of them?
Uh, no, I believe there were, uh, ten police vehicles approved, uh, there were three Parks and Rec vehicles, uh, skids here for Parks and Recreation, uh, one fire vehicle, uh, two, uh, two fire engines and then two vehicles with Public, the Public Works, uh, along with a boom lift.
So, didn't we appropriate money, um, in the police budget for cars?
We're not, it's not additional money, it's just the April work.
So, in the budget, we have items under capital?
So, this is the lump sum of what we need to do, okay?
Yes, lump sum, all of our capital purchases, typically, it's for, you know, larger vehicle purchases that we depreciate over several years.
Now, do, um, when you have the loan, is money coming out of these different departments that we're getting vehicles for to pay for the service?
Essentially, it gets accounted for in their, in their department as an expenditure once they make that purchase and then we have the revenue side of things, once we actually get this loan, we can take out a maximum amount of two, two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars as a revenue and it offsets and then in the subsequent years, uh, and whatever the term length of that loan is, we will, it'll show up in our interest principal payments per year. So, that's where you'll see the department next year, say it's the Fire Department and we're buying, uh, one man, eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars worth of fire apparatus and equipment. Next year, the associated debt payments for that will come out of their specific department alignment.
And so, to be in, in that line item?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, that we adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse FY twenty-nineteen twenty capital equipment purchases.
Second. Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Astor, is a further discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor, item number eleven is consideration of board adopting ordinance for the demolition of one-three-one-seven La Grange Street. Uh, on November the ninth, two thousand seventeen, the structure located at the address was damaged by fire. The owner was given several months to repair or rehabilitate the property, but no permits have been obtained. On the ninth of April, two thousand eighteen, a minimum housing letter was sent to the owner of record, but no response was received. A hearing was held before the building inspector on the eleventh of April, two thousand nineteen, at which time an order was issued giving the owner thirty days to repair the structure and comply with the minimum housing standards. To this date, no permits have been obtained and no work has been performed. There's a memo, uh, included in your packet from Mr. Ruggeri, uh, attached and along with, uh, the picture of the property and chronological list of all the events, uh, including the things that I've listed in this discussion.
There's no questions? Uh, I would just like to ask, I always like to ask if the owner of the property is present tonight? If they have, want to say something. Not being present, I would like to, uh, board adopt a resolution approving a demolition ordinance for structure located at thirteen-seventeenth La Grange Street.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor, item number twelve is consideration of board adopting ordinance amending chapter seventy traffic and vehicles of the Code of Ordinances. Several intersections along West Street and Burn Street have recently been evaluated by Public Works and the police departments. Uh, as a result of those evaluations, it's recommended four-way stop intersections be established at Cedar and West Streets, Main and West Streets, Main and Burn Streets and Cypress and Burn Streets. An ordinance, uh, is proposed to amend this section, uh, seventy dash one-zero-four to provide for these changes. Uh, there's a memo included in your packet and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
No, I just want to thank the, um, city manager and, uh, Public Works for paying attention to this because we had a fatality at these intersections and, um, we, we don't want to have another one. So, I think this is a good move, um, and thanks to Public Works, they've cut back the trees, so the sightline is better. And then the last thing we'll go in and do is paint some striping right at the stop sign so people can't park their cars close to the edge, so it inhibits people from coming to say, I want to, Mr. City Manager, I want to make sure that does take place, that striping right there.
Barring no rain tomorrow, I assume this work will be completed tomorrow, uh, as long as it's not wet pavement or rain. Uh, so if we can get, the signs will definitely be up tomorrow, uh, the stop bars subsequently as long as dry weather allows us to.
I drove down there today and people really do speed. It's, you know, I, I, we talked about the poor police being so stretched, but, I mean, somebody was flying down Cedar Street and not even paying attention coming from the other directions west and, uh, I, this is-
Well, I just want to appreciate, um, say thank you to Mr. Elijah Brown because he does keep us up to date on things that go on in, in the community and he had reached out to me and sent me the pictures. I guess there was another accident that was there and we were able to go ahead and get it on the board and, and take care of it. So, I think that's awesome that our citizens reach out and keep us up to date when we're not able to always have eyes on everything.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a-
And I too, um, um, like to say thank you to city manager and Matt, um, Public Works Department because I've had, um, citizens reach out to me about the area as well. So, this will, and, and we've had two, we've had one death accident with a death at one of those intersections and then another accident, so thank you very much that we've moved forward quickly on this.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter seventy traffic and vehicles of the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is a further discussion. Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number thirteen also ties in with what we just discussed. Uh, it's consideration of board adopt a resolution to amend the schedule of stop intersections as defined in section seventy-nine ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances. Um, basically, the ones to be amended, uh, we will remove Cedar at West, Main at West, Main at Burn and Cypress at Burn. Uh, the reason why we're removing them from this section is because we're adding them into a four-way stop intersection, which is a different section of our code.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to amend the schedule of stop intersections as defined in section seventy-nine ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris, is a further discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, schedule appointments starting with, uh, uh, Alderman Bingle?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Harris?
Um, yes, I am, um, here to appoint, uh, Barbara Sampson in regards to, um, Carol Williams' second term for planning and zoning, which has expired. Um, Ms. Barbara Sampson stated that she wanted to be appointed to this board, um, and so she's spoken to the individual and so she'd be a good fit, so I'd like to, um, appoint her. Um, Ms. Barbara Sampson, door, okay. Can I get a second?
Second, okay.
Their motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all prepared the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, anything else?
Nope.
Uh, Alderman Astor?
Nothing tonight, sir.
And, uh, Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Well, I don't have any tonight, but I have reached out to three injured citizens, um, for, actually to serve on the board of adjustments. So, hopefully, I'll have someone by next board meeting.
Okay, um, Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Okay. Next item is the attorney's report.
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Uh, two quick things, uh, one of note, I know that many of y'all have kind of had your, uh, ears, um, two is the, uh, use of the Omega Center for, uh, some Parks and Recreation programming. Um, we have been working through, uh, some of the logistics and I guess the, the details of that uh, with, um, the folks from the Omega Center, um, and, uh, we're currently closing in on finalizing that. Um, and in doing so, uh, it is our hopes that that will be on the next agenda. Uh, as far as the timeline goes, um, it will be probably September one by the time we start some services, uh, there. uh, there. Uh, August the first is the first, uh, of which we can actually get in there and do some work on some of, uh, remediating some of their issues that they have. Um, so at that time, uh, once August first rolls around, we'll get in there and, and address those. Um, so hopefully September one is, uh, approximate time in which we can actually start some services, uh, recreation services at that location. Um, real quickly, um, uh, just to go through some of the items, uh, I think that were from the previous board men, uh, meeting, uh, we did provide the shuttle for the, uh, Korea, uh, Korean War veteran who was, uh, uh, laid to rest in our National Cemetery. Um, I know Matt has been working with, uh, some of the sidewalk cleanup and repairs. Uh, sent me some pictures today. That is ongoing and will continue to go, uh, until we, uh, make some significant headway on that. The board appropriated ten thousand dollars. Uh, none of that, which has been spent to date on actual staff. We've been doing it internally, but he is seeking out, uh, uh, opportunities for us to, uh, get temporary help or contractual help with some of those issues. Um, the, um, as, as you heard from, uh, one of our folks from Request and Petition Citizens, we took care of the Mcotter House issues that was brought to our attention as well. Um, uh, we have followed up with NC DOT on the Alfred Cunningham Bridge, open and closing, but we have not got a response back to this date about it. Uh, so, uh, we have done that. Um, the board asked me, uh, to have a conversation with the sheriff and the county manager. I started out with county manager, since that's kind of the, the first route for me to start with. Uh, and, uh, he seemed to be amenable to us, uh, having that conversation to see if that might be something to explore with the sheriff, so that's my next step on that. Uh, so I'll be contacting, uh, Sheriff Chip Hughes regarding, uh, animal control. Um, and then, um, I think that is to date, uh, there's two items that I still need to work on, which is, uh, speaking with new ECC director. I, I did speak with one of their staff about the, uh, follow-up on, uh, some of their grant funding, uh, items that they had, uh, that they're trying to assist the communities that they serve with. Uh, so I'll follow up some more, uh, conversation with the director of how the, uh, Eastern Carolina Cog could potentially help us out. Um, so that's kind of my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm not going to update the public on your meeting tomorrow.
Sure. Uh, tomorrow, um, uh, the mayor or the mayor pro tem and I will be going, uh, to Wallace. Um, it's a meeting of the North Caro, or, I'm sorry, the Eastern North Carolina, uh, Alliance, uh, basically a coalition that we had had some initial discussions, uh, with Wilmington and the, the mayor of our city, uh, on about recovery and resiliency in Eastern North Carolina, and trying to continue the focus that we have, uh, of the state agencies and federal, uh, some of our federal representatives, uh, to keep a focus on Eastern North Carolina and us being able to become more, uh, resilient, uh, in the future and recover from our existing situations. Uh, we have a very large meeting. I think it's probably going to be about fifty, uh, managers and mayors across Eastern North Carolina, uh, region, uh, to attend this meeting. I know that, uh, Chairman Meyer from Craven County is going. Uh, uh, obviously, we'll have two. Kim Maxey, uh, one of our staff members, I was, as a MPO representative, is going. Uh, so she kind of represents multiple, uh, agencies here as well, so she'll be going. Uh, that's from just our organization. Um, but there'll be a lot of different folks there. I know Wilmington's mayor and, and some of their staff will be there. Uh, I mean, just tons of counties, uh, Duplin County, um, Pender County, um, just, you name it, they'll be there. Uh, so, so very happy Lenore County's coming. Uh, I know their manager, assistant manager, and their, their chairman is coming, so it's going to be pretty heavily attended, and hopefully, uh, we'll be able to discuss some of the priorities. I know we have guests from few charitable trusts that's coming, representatives from Senator Burr's office, um, is, and Senator Tillis's office, I think, are all going to be there. Uh, there's going to be other individuals from the newly formed North Carolina Office of Recovery, uh, whatever it is, I can't remember exactly what it is, but, uh, part of the emergency management, um, uh, I guess that's, uh, S- S- Sprayberry, um, uh, him and his staff will be attending. Uh, so, uh, it's, it should be a pretty significant, uh, accumulation of, of elected officials and managers across Eastern North Carolina to, to assist with this.
Mark, um, I, oh, you go ahead. I, I saw a post on Facebook, um, having to do with, I guess, our grant writers' site talking about all the grants that she's gotten for the city of New Bern for resiliency. Um, can you update us this? I didn't realize we had gotten several more, and, uh, I didn't know where we were at.
Um, to, to ask me on the fly to list out all of them, I'm, I...
No, I, not list out, so, uh, obviously, we've got a substantial amount of money now. Is that, are we moving forward on trying to do something? I know that was all for resiliency and to, I guess, hire a group or do something to put a resiliency plan together?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Ruggeri's been tasked with the RFQ, uh, to put together for the resiliency plan for our city, at least the first phase of it. As you recall, we kind of had multiple phases within that, uh, resiliency plan. Uh, so he's in the process of putting together the RFQ for that, so send it out because it is a, a project that should be bid, uh, due to the size and scale of it, uh, as far as the cost and the professional expertise necessary. So, we are going to send out an RFQ for that. Uh, we have received, uh, some grants, um, from various organizations to assist with some of the unfunded uh, projects that may have been a result or led to the result of some damage that we may have been, uh, seen from, from the storm. Uh, two were storm, storm repair projects. One, I think, is over, uh, off of Metcalf, and the other is, uh, over at Derby Park. Roanoke, on Roanoke Avenue. Uh, so there's two drainage improvement projects that I think that we're going to be able to get, uh, money from Golden Leaf on, and I'm pretty sure that, that's been awarded. We're just in the process of finalizing all that. Um, we have another grant, uh, that we have, uh, recently sent out, uh, also to Golden Leaf, uh, to, uh, add an additional, um, uh, fire department, uh, rescue boat, uh, so that we would have that. And one that we have is like a Vietnam airboat that's rather aged. Uh, and, and so we have requested some assistance from them, uh, on that, and, uh, um, there's quite a few other ones, and I'll put together a list, uh, and, and update the board at our next meeting, if they would like for me to do that.
Mr. Stevens, um, can you give me a little bit more information on the services that you said was going to be available September one for the Omega Center?
I would love to, but more professional, uh, uh, list of those items, I probably would rely on Mr. Hughes to come up, uh, so I'm going to ask Foster to come up, and maybe he can actually provide that for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The programs we've found offering at the Ma, Omega Center were programs we were previously offering at Stanley White Recreation Center without basketball. The Omega Center is not conducive for doing any sports inside, based on how they've reconfigured the facility. So we will be doing things like arts and crafts, card playing, or we'll, uh, we'll host certain meetings that we were previously hosting at Stanley White, and things like that.
So that, you, you won't have any, um, after, after-school programs there?
The after-school programs will start over there, yes, they will.
All right, okay. I know you have a little bit more information for us once this, um, site is up to par and ready to have a grand opening.
I, I have a question. Why, um, I know that there needs to be some things to be done, but in regards to that outside of the Omega Center, what is the other option for these kids in between now and September first? I mean, it's the summertime.
Well, currently, we're providing a summer camp program, which we've done. And what I can tell you is this year's summer camp, the, the summer camp, the YES Camp that was held at Stanley White, we've got more participants this year than we did last year. The children in the Duffy Field community, they meet over at the Stanley White Recreation Center out in the playground. They're there for about thirty or forty minutes, then they go on field trips or go to Stan, over to West New Bern Recreation Center, or go swimming. So, we're servicing that need of, of children. Right now, I believe we have sixty kids that are participating in that program. We aren't offering any, any structured activities outside, like bas, open basketball or anything like that. We have had a considerable number of folks from the Duffy Field community that have gone over to West New Bern to play basketball in the evenings when the recreation center is available.
Then the YES program, is it free or is there a fee?
The YES program, there is a small charge for that. It's basically to cover the cost of the field trips.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are you up there? Can you tell us about? Kidsville?
I'm happy to talk about Kidsville. So, we're really excited to let you know that after fifteen months, we're going to start building Kidsville two-point-oh next week.
Woo!
That's right. So, we're, we're already collected, we've getting, we're getting shipments every day of playground equipment. Right now, we're unloading two tractor-trailer loads this weekend of, uh, recycled milk jugs, which are basically, uh, in the form of lumber now because it's going to be recycled material. Starting Monday, the consultants from Leathers and Associates will be here. We'll start, uh, doing some layouts. Then Tuesday, our volunteers, and we need quite a lot of volunteers, will be coming in to help. That's right. So, if anyone would like to volunteer, we're doing three shifts a day, Tuesday through Sunday. Uh, first shift is at eight to twelve, then we'll have lunch. The second shift is from twelve-thirty to five, then we'll have dinner. And the third shift is five-thirty to about nine PM at night. So if anyone would like to come and participate, we'd love to have you. So, the goal is by the end of the week, we will have an opening of the playground Sunday afternoon. So, it all depends on how it goes during the week, but we'll update you as we go. So, a lot of activities going on. If anyone needs me, I'll be at Kidsville all week long, so.
Now, is there a signup sheet for, you know, you don't want everybody to come at eight, and you need people in the afternoon?
That's right. They can contact us at Parks and Recreation. Our number is six-three-nine-two-nine-zero-one, and we're happy to talk, and we're getting a lot of phone calls from folks that are, they're wanting to volunteer their time. We're also looking for some, some things like impact drivers and cordless drills and things like that, because folks are going to be putting this playground together, so.
Is it too late for people to purchase, um, names and stuff on the...
Oh, no, it's not too late. As a matter of fact, we'll have several of the pickets out to show you exactly what they're going to look like, and we anticipate we're going to sell quite a few next week for that.
Of course, before you leave, uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that this board, all of us, participate.
Sign off for a session of...
Yes, please.
Gone all next week, I'm going to have to apologize in advance. I am gone all names. Hey, I'm going to PepsiCo. I'm going to do a pop-up store in PepsiCo.
Give her, give her a break. She shoveled one load of dirt.
So, when we have lunch, Foster, when we have lunch, then we only want Coke products. We only want Coke products.
Believe you said that.
Foster, how about, um, an update on, um, Lawson Creek docks?
Well, I'm also happy to say that today, the contractor drove the pilings in to the, the floating dock, section number two, so we've got a little bit of work to do on the deck boards, but I anticipate those docks being open by Friday at the latest. So, really excited about that as well.
Great, thank you.
And, um, Alderman, um, A, uh, Harris, I just want to, uh, comment that I had previously spoken with Foster in reference to the YES Camp. That's the one that the children meet at Henderson Park because I was, um, concerned about them being out there in the heat. So, he, um, updated me and gave me some information, letting me know that the kids was only out there for no more than an hour, if that, at the latest, before they're picked up and sent over to West New Bern. So I did inquire about that because I was worried about the children being in that hot heat.
Thank you.
And we still didn't, um, say whether or not we were going to volunteer to help them at Kidsville.
I'm going to do an eight o'clock shift.
No, let's not try to overlook that now. I didn't make that.
I'm not trying to be out there in that heat, but I'll do the eight o'clock shift if I have to go jump over my fence because I live right behind it.
And I'd be glad to volunteer, Foster.
We see it's crickets for the rest of the war.
Anything else, Senator, the city manager's report? Could you update us on the community rating system, where we are? On that? We, last night, I heard, I think, we were down about five to eight houses that needed to be...
Um, you know, we're, we're getting that number. Um, going through the files again. We have to check with the state to make sure our, our representatives that we're still on track. We're in the process of doing that. We have the surveyor lined up and ready to go once the state clears. It says we're okay, and we can move forward, so, a couple weeks.
Well, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Senator, the city manager's report? Um, going to new business, I, I want to start out by doing my new business, and that is that I started asking a question earlier about the certification with the police department, and I echo what Alderman A- Astor said about, I think it's, it's important we do that. Um, the question I wanted to ask was whether or not the group runs into cities that aren't doing their part. And, uh, I want to ask that question because I want to make sure we're doing our part, and part of our part would be safe sidewalks, plenty of them that are in good shape, street lights, improper litter, um, programs adopted streets and other things like that, including, um, this, the, the right number of trash bins or, um, um, trash cans in certain areas of town that, that the citizens actually would participate and be a part of, um, of cleanup if they saw something, that, if there was a trash can nearby. So, along those lines, I do want to thank the staff since our last meeting, that quite a bit of the sidewalk problems, um, have been taken care of, and there's, there's quite a few more that need to be taken care of. And part of that is each year, we have a budget amount to, for sidewalks. And I'm hoping that the board of all men and the staff will, um, in their daily travels, look at there are quite a few sidewalks I'm seeing that are being, um, cleared that, that need some repair and are not safe for our residents. And we do want our residents out walking and getting to know each other. So, I'm not so sure if we have to budget minimum, or a budget amendment or whatever, that we might ought to go back at, I, I could name locations, but, um, I'm not at that point where I want to have another couple, Alderman go around with me and let's, let's kind of do a, a review of some areas, and let's write them down and, and look at, um, you know, there's a couple situations where there's some kind of dangerous areas that, um, the sidewalks stop and start back thirty feet, thirty feet apart, and I, I'd like to connect those. And before we go out and build more, make sure we got ones we, we have working properly. Um, so, this Saturday, if anybody would like to volunteer, we have a group, uh, bring your, your trimmers, your blowers, your, your hose, uh, shovels, brooms, and we're going to meet at the Omega Center, and we're going to go back out and do some more, um, trimming of, of things that individuals volunteering can do. The, the heavy stuff, again, the city is, has done a good job in the last two weeks, and will continue to. There, there are situations. One near the Walt Bellamy Monument that has been taken care of. I personally sat in the car and watched a, a resident of the area walk down the street. When he got to the section that was overgrown, he, he got in the street, walked in the street. Then when he got past that area, he got back on the sidewalk. So, you know, um, we can do better. And, uh, again, I think the, the board's action two weeks ago, and I thank the staff for, for jumping right on that. Um, starting with new business, I'll remain.
Well, let me just dovetail on that a little bit. Um, Mr. Montain, you know, I had a conversation with, um, Mr. Young, Wriggum Young, from Waste Management, and he assured me he was going to get me some trash cans, because I, like the mayor, have been asked by some of the residents in Duffy Field, if they could please just have some trash cans in their neighborhood. They feel like people would not be throwing trash on the ground and keeping cleaners. So could you please follow up? I have sent him an email, but he promised me he was going to get me some trash cans. So if you could follow up with him, and if not, tell him, I'm going to call him. He said, you know, he would prefer that you contact him, um, and we can follow up on those trash cans because I agree with the mayor on that one, uh, in trying to do that. And, um, I've said probably enough tonight, and I just want to thank Foster for the Fourth of July activities. A fun time had by all. It was so nice to see, um, all the activities at Lawson Creek Park. There were so many things to do for our young people. Fireworks were great as always, and the traffic was incredible. So, it was, uh, lots of people out enjoying it. Um, and I want to thank you and your staff. You're just doing a great job. If anybody, if you'll just go to the, um, newbernnc.gov and go under Parks and Rec. Uh, pretty amazing, the list of activities that are going on there. I happened to go in there today and saw all the different things that we're doing, and that, that's great. So, lots going on in our little city, and that's all.
All right, so I have a few events, um, that I want to talk about. The first one is the Second Annual Let's Cope Event. That is July thirteenth from two to five PM at the West, uh, New Bern Rec Center. Um, and that's with Ms. Givante Bass. It is basically breaking the stigma between mental health and the black community, um, and it's free, and, um, I think everyone, bring your children, um, so you can kind of interact and see what she does. She's a therapist. Um, the second thing is, um, there is going to be an educational event at the Community College that, uh, my nonprofit has worked on. It's called Dreaming, Starting, and Growing Your Small Business Hubzone. Um, and that's for historically underutilized businesses. It's a free event. Um, it's great information. It's going to be July seventeenth, Wednesday, um, six PM to eight PM, and it's going to be in the Student, uh, Community Center. And then the last thing that I'm super proud of, I'm excited about, is, um, school's going to be coming back. Uh, we, obviously, parents can't wait for that. And, um, we are doing, um, a big bro, big sis mentoring skate night with the eighties theme at the Rollerland on August twenty-second. It is free. Um, food will be provided. We need mentors, and we need, um, the youth ages eleven-seven, uh, eleven through seventeen, basically... We need mentors, and we need um the youth ages eleven seven uh eleven through seventeen, basically middle school and high school. And what we're doing is it's uh the Thursday before school, we want to be able to give them the ability to learn how to network and extend their branch to have someone else that they can reach out in just case they have problems. And then also the other event at um the Community College, food will be there as well, and it's free. All of the events are free. Um so I'm always in the community doing things, so I just want to be able to put those out there. They will be on my alderman page and Facebook page.
Your Rollerland event, what time does it start?
Which one?
Rollerland.
Rollerland?
August twenty second.
Yeah, that's going to be uh eight to ten.
Eight to ten?
Yes. And it's gonna be amazing. It's the eighties theme, and just the main big part about it is it's teaching eleven through seventeen-year-old, middle school, high school students how to network. Because for you to be successful, you need to know how to network, and that's what our nonprofit is about, so.
You know, it's the eighties theme.
Yes, I do. I was born in eighty-five.
No cell phones. Actually, cell phones don't work in there.
I actually type on like a brother's typewriter, so I'm please, I'm old. I just, where's my birthday cake? I just turned thirty-four. You guys miss my birthday. Yeah, okay, sorry. Back to business. Go ahead.
I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Um first, Mr. City Manager, would you please um tell us about this? And I'm I've lost it. Tell us about your certification that you recently received and tell us a little bit about that.
Oh, I um yeah, I'm not a bragger, sir.
I understand you're not, and I know we got an email, but I was just sitting here trying to find it from Brenda.
So I um recently completed all the requirements for the uh I C L M A credential manager certification. So that is basically a it's a certification for, I I think there's only thirteen hundred across the net worldwide. Um and so uh it it includes a a kind of a self-assessment as to where you are with things. It requires me to go through so much professional development hours uh per year. You know, tend some some courses and classes that I have to to meet those requirements. Um and you have to have the experience requirements necessary for you to be considered that as well, so. But once again, there's, you know, if there's five hundred and fifty-some municipalities, I think, in the state of North Carolina. Um and so you imagine worldwide, all the municipalities and cities, and there's thirteen hundred managers uh in the world that have that credential manager.
Well, congratulations. I'm proud of you for taking that. Um also, so um Commissioner Denny Plucker and I have a meeting finally set up with the Department of Transportation concerning the Thurman Road and Highway seventy traffic light. As many of you may know, the Thurman Road does not line up. It creates problems. You almost have to play chicken with the oncoming traffic to make a turn there. So we're we're gonna see if there's something that can be done to short-term fix this that um traffic light over there so we can, there's been some bad wrecks there. I know you you had an accident there as well, didn't you? So uh also, um just to remind everybody that tomorrow uh at the Knights of Columbus Building from twelve noon to six, the the fire department is having a blood drive. Actually, it's the fire department and the police department called Battle of the Badges, having a blood drive.
Teen boots.
It's the opportunity for you to go out and donate some of your blood to the Red Cross and vote for the fire department at while you're there. Nothing personal, chief, but.
Are you gonna donate blood?
I I unfortunately, I can't give blood. I did for years and years and years, but they put a stop to it. They said they didn't want any more mine, so.
I'm trying to get some more of my counterparts to come out because usually only me donate blood.
Just, you know, seriously.
I gotta be here tomorrow, sorry.
Seriously, I mean, blood is 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 needed in this area, and from twelve o'clock to six o'clock tomorrow at the Knights of Columbus Building, and when you walk in, they're gonna ask you, do you support the police department, fire department? So just say fire department, and you'll be able to come.
Did you give half a pint to the fire department every night?
No, no, no. Um and that's all I have. Well, you know what? I do have one more thing, and it was the first thing on my list. In conversation with the engineer um for Bluewater Rise yesterday, we the we discussed the possibility of doing a resolution from this board to the state asking them to consider improvements on County Line Road. Now, any traffic that leaves Bluewater Rise, Evans Mill, and right on down, has to go down Old Airport Road to Thurman Road to get back out, to go back towards Cherry Point. And the problem is that Thurman Road is such a dangerous intersection. Many of them are avoiding that area and going through Carolina Colors to try to get out. So um it at some point in time, they're gonna have to do something with that road. So I would like that this board consider a resolution to D O T. I know you probably have some information on it as well, or is this the proper way of doing it? You you serve on the board.
It 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 needs to, all those go through the N P O now, the way that process works. Um we can certainly, you know, voice our opinion on that, but it's all a ranking process with the N P O that votes on those. We actually have a meeting later on this month where all those are gonna be reviewed. Um to my knowledge, Jeff, I don't believe that County Line Road is even on the list to be considered. And it's it's a very long-term type plan, so I'm just giving you an idea. If we were to put it on there and it ranked high enough to potentially get funding, your ten years, maybe?
Yeah, it's a really, it's a different pot of money specifically for unapproved roads, so it's not like a regular street. So it's more restrictive than people that you ask we uh rank our existing street.
We we've we've discussed it before. Um Commissioner Mitchell, and she's she serves on the N P O as well. And um we we were told, sure, put it on there, but it's it's highly unlikely. So I would just, I'll give you a word of caution that I don't want to give anyone any false hope that it could be done in the near.
Well, it certainly won't be considered unless we put it on there, correct?
Sure, sure.
So what 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 do we need to do to put it on the list?
I'll I'll be happy at our next meeting um to to add that to the list for consideration for a future plan. We're all, they're already there for this year for us to to vote and rank, uh but we can put it on there for the next round.
So we don't need a resolution or anything?
Don't have to. I'll I'll be happy to take that to the to the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Okay, okay.
The traffic is a big thing out through the South Old Tower City. Uh right off of News Boulevard, uh a lot of traffic cuts through Colony uh Colony Drive to get back onto Glenberry Road, and they cut off uh Glenberry Road to go through Ronda to take the shortcut to Race Track Road. So the problem is everywhere. It's not just in one community. And um we have a lot of kids that's actually playing in the streets, you know, when all these cars are coming through. Uh I I asked a top chief about maybe six months ago, a year ago, and he had his guys to go out to to help to see if we could slow some of the traffic down. Uh I don't know the answer for that situation, but we just have to stay on it and uh work diligently until we can come up with a solution that we can deal with this. And that's about all we have tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman, thanks.
Yes, um Mayor, I just want to thank you for, you know, having volunteers, city staff, come in and take care of the sidewalks. We do have some sidewalks in the city that really need some maintenance, but um I also, I I have a concern right now, a big concern, because I have a lot of constituents reaching out to me because, you know, hurricane season is here. And we have a lot of ditches and drains in the city that needs to be cleaned. And I know sidewalks, that's something that we can do. It's it's not a a a in-depth big project like we have for the ditches and sidewalks. I mean, the ditches and the and the uh drains. So if that's something that we can put some concentration on, and I I I'm really concentrating on the area of North Hills Drive and Hazel Avenue and Washington Court because they got really, they was flooded when we had, the water just goes down into that little gut and it just sits there. And if we can get the drains over there cleaned out, I I I would dearly appreciate it, and I know the citizens would as well. Um also, Matt and Jeff, Regary, I just want to thank y'all for finally getting that dumpster out of um Windy Trail. Thank you very much. Um also, it's been a while now, and I haven't had any feedback, and I really haven't been persistent about it because I know you all have a lot this work, a a heavy workload. You have a lot to do. But I wanted to know what was, what is the update mark? And I think it was put on Matt's back about the flashing yellow lights out at the intersection of Highway forty-three, seventy, and fifty-five in News Boulevard. What what is the progress on that?
I know we had reached out to D O T to check on the status of that. I think they gave us an update. Do you recall what the latest one was?
I wasn't prepared for that one, but I will tell you, if I recall, what Lee Marks said, we did reach out to them uh some time ago. And if I, my recollection is correct, I believe it was funded and they were getting ready to start that project. Let me reach back out to them. I'll dig through some emails. Maybe I can find one uh before we leave tonight and give you an update. But I still, I think that project was gonna start back when we talked about it a couple of months ago.
Alright, thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Odom?
Uh yes, sir, Mayor, two things. Um Mr. Regary, um do we have an update to our sidewalk plan as far as where we are, what's been completed, how it was funded, and things of that nature?
No.
Okay. That wasn't easy, man.
Yeah, um well, when you say sidewalk plan, we are essentially at this point in time relying on development to implement our plan. I was talking to um Matt Montane this morning. As um we are having conversations and gonna have, start having meetings about determining. Now we're at the point in our plan that as uh what the mayor was saying is we have some gaps where we've had sidewalks put in, and we're gonna go and look for those and start to program those in next year's budgets for sidewalk plans, you know, to complete the uh to complete the system, fill in those little gaps. This is kind of what we anticipated when we created our, when we amended the sidewalk ordinance. Um we anticipated this coming, so we're we're um preparing for it. Probably next year's budget will have money specifically for certain areas of town where there are gaps where we've had developers put in sidewalks.
Thank you. Um my last comment, I I brought it up two weeks ago, and I said I wasn't gonna name names. And I'll I'll wish, I'll hold my tongue again this time, but the candidates that are not in the election, would you please pick up your signs? Matt, I know you've picked up quite a few political signs, but you've also picked up some other ones. About how many have you picked up lately?
In the last three weeks, we picked up three hundred.
Three, so three hundred signs that are are illegal? Is that, that's a safe term to say?
It's not only candidates, it's selling stuff.
It's we buy, we pay cash for your house, yard work. All those signs are illegal. And I don't know what the appetite of this board is, but I I took a picture. I didn't do what the mayor did and have it ready to put up here. But I took a picture of the intersection pulling into the mall, and there are six signs in the median that we buy a house for cash, uh uh a candidate that lost weeks and months ago in an election. So I don't know, from an enforcement standpoint, we certainly don't want to spend staff staff time out picking up signs, but we've got to somehow get a public service announcement out there that you can't just plop a sign up in the right of way. It's illegal to do so. So I don't know if we can maybe get a um a P S A or something we can put on C T TV ten, put on our social media networks, but something to let folks know that you can't just put a sign up in the right of way in the medians. It's not only dangerous, but it's it's horrible to look at, especially when you leave them there. They get cut, and then they get blown over, and then we've got a litter problem, so that's um that's it. Next next meeting, I'll name names because I've got a list of three candidates that, for some reason, still have their signs up, and they're actually putting evidently new signs up or putting them at new locations for whatever reason. I don't know, but uh that's all, Mayor.
Alderman Odom, can I? I've got something for you.
Sure.
Um, uh because I know it's your ward. Is there anything in Chief with the Chick-fil-A problem, the traffic? I was out there today. I'm telling you, it is a catastrophe waiting to happen. So four cars out on Martin Luther King that couldn't even turn. Then you had people that were trying, weren't going into Chick-fil-A, but were trying to get around the car, and they could not get around the car. Then coming out of Chick-fil-A, you couldn't take the left to get in. I mean, we've got, somebody.
That chicken was made by God himself, so I'm, we didn't go sit in that line and get that chicken.
I know, whatever it is, but can we not, can we request them to have a policeman out there during lunchtime or something?
If you police cars there, pull up.
It's terrible. It was terrible there today. And I'm very, I'm concerned about somebody really getting in a very bad accident.
I'm I'm completely agree with you.
Oh, she said it was Free Sandwich Day. He dressed up like a.
Doesn't matter. It's always that.
Um I I've had some discussions with the the property owners of the mall. I have not had any late lately because they don't seem to want to return a phone call. I guess they don't eat anything from us at this point. But just like their sign out front, code ordinance violation, if that's the case with their sign, then I say we, you know, we start sending them some notices about that. But um the issue with that is it it met the criteria for the the land use and the planning when they put it in. Um just because they have more traffic now, I mean, we can, we can have resources there. But as the chief mentioned earlier, there's a lot of places around the city that have to, they have to manage and maintain. Plus, it's a private entity, so just like churches, I I know churches often on Sunday, they actually have a police officer there who helps direct traffic. And for the longest time, I thought we did that out of the goodness of our heart, but they actually, there's churches paid for that service. So maybe we can have a conversation with, um I'll talk to Tom and see if maybe he'll do something.
With the dental office opening up too, that's gonna be additional traffic, and that's the only, you know, way there because Chick-fil-A backs everybody up. You can't.
And there's gonna be a hotel in the back, so people may cut through the mall parking lot as a shortcut to get there instead of going around.
Well, we had heard that there was going to be another exit off of seventy. Is that, they were looking at that?
I know at one time they were looking to do that. I know D O T had kind of put up a little bit of roadblock on that. I don't know, Jeff, do you? So it's been approved. They just haven't done it.
I had a quick question, Mayor. This is for J R. Um do you have any update on um pay-as-you-go? How many people have registered for pay-as-you-go? How that's going since we've gone fully loaded?
I don't have an update as far as exactly how many people we have right now. The last uh last count I had was around forty, but that was a week and a half ago. Uh so we're, so we are making some progress. People are getting on. Uh people are enjoying it and they're liking the program. Uh I've not heard any complaints.
That's good. Thank you. I just wanted to know.
Anything else at this time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes.
I believe you do, Mayor, on two matters. Um one pursuant to one forty-three thirteen eleven eight six to discuss a personnel matter. And the second pursuant to one forty-three thirteen eleven eight three to maintain our attorney-client privilege to discuss threatened litigation.
So move.
Second.
A motion. Second is their discussion. Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.